Good evening. The Board has now returned from closed session and will begin with the regular session, the Keys Union School Board District Trustees Meeting. Item 4.1, report out closed session items. We have nothing to report out. 4.2, approval amendment of agenda. I have two. We have student report. 8.2, we're going to update that today. So 8.2 will now go to 8.3 and then so on. And then we also have an update that's in front of the Board members for 10.1. It's highlighted in yellow. Anything else from the Board? Dana, we good? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the two amendments?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
You guys are always the same time. Dana?
Give it to Mike.
Mr. Greener got it?
All right.
All right, moving on to flag salute by Mr. Green.
Everybody please rise.
Aye.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We missed you at last month's meeting doing the flag salute.
Yeah, who filled my shoes?
Jeff did.
And I messed it up.
Oh, no way. All right, moving on to item six, invitation to address the Board of Trustees. Do we have any? All right, we do not. Moving on to announcements. 7.1, Keys Elementary School Red Ribbon Week is October 25th to the 29th. 7.2, Keys to Learning Charter Red Ribbon Week Dress Up Days Activities is the same, October 25th to the 29th. 7.3, Kinder to Zindes Farms Pumpkin Patch is next week, October 26th, I think? They're moving some dates around.
Yep.
7.5, Pumpkin Run Western Barbecue Day, October 29th. Spratling Middle School Girls Basketball at Waterford is October 25th. 7.7, Spratling Middle School Girls Basketball is a home game at Spratling on October 27th. Spratling Middle School Fall Rally's by Grade Level will be October 25th. Moving on to 8.1, staff reports. Do we have any questions or concerns with the staff? Reports? All right. Moving on to the updated 8.2 student report. Mr. Murray and your students?
Hello, my name is Brandon Kinonas and I am President of Student Council for Keys Elementary School. Student Council has been very busy planning spirit days and clubs and working on fundraisers. We just finished up selling Halloween pencils. We actually sold the first, sold out the first day and had to make more. We made about $300. Our next sales will be at Christmas. We voted on getting good portable soccer goals for the fields. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's going to talk about Costco.
Yes.
That is okay for her.
Absolutely.
And is Costco here right now?
No. So what we'll do is, after we hear her presentation, we will be happy to take the materials that they have and we'll get them to management so that they can see that.
My name is Jennifer and I am the co-president of Student Council. The Key's students wanted to tell Costco, thank you very much for your donation of the backpacks. I've seen many of the students wearing them and using them. We appreciate all you do for our school. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the students have made posters for them to put up in their break room and they have also made thank you cards and also thank you letters.
Great.
Very good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The mom could take pictures too.
That was a good.
Go stand on the wall or something, guys. Not in the middle.
Or in front of the.
I know, it feels awkward.
You can go over there and take pictures too. Hold on, hold on, let the mom take pictures.
Under her mom?
Don't forget mom.
Do you guys go to Costco? So when you go, maybe they'll have those up there. I have a feeling they probably will.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing them.
Thank you.
And congratulations, guys, you did a very good job.
It was great seeing students.
Yes. Yes, that's true.
I'll tell you that later. All right, moving on to 8.3, is donation recognition from Costco backpacks? Mr. Brazil?
Nothing, as the students, I think, put it far more eloquently than I could ever do, is we are very thankful that Costco each year, not only just the backpacks, but as we get closer to the holidays, all of the contributions that they make, whether it be for baskets or for sponsoring families, we certainly appreciate it and we will make sure to get all of the student work to them. I think that will be very meaningful to them. So, thank you to Costco and all the employees that make it happen.
Yeah, it's not only financial, they provide a lot of manpower.
Lots and goods, absolutely.
And it's, every year, they always fight to come help us. They really want to, they feel it's rewarding. All right, moving on to 8.4, retire recognition?
We have, Ms. Garza's not here tonight, but we wanted to honor her for her 27 years of service to the district. That's a very long time and we were hoping she would be here. We have a small, little token of our gratitude and appreciation for all of her services, so we will make sure that we get them, or get it to her. But again, 27 years and she was appreciated and is missed, so.
And that's 27 years also as a community member, or longer. I grew up in her house.
Right.
Yeah. And that's what I love about hiring locals, is they know what the community wants, needs, and they stay. So I appreciate all those years of knowing you. All right, moving on to agenda items. Actions prepared for the consent calendar are consistent with adopted and approved policies by the district and are deemed routine in nature. They will be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the Board request that an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it will be taken up in the order indicated on the main agenda. We have 9.1 through 9.6. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve all?
All motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.1, this is updated in front of you. It's the one with the green header and highlighted. Approval of certificated classified confidential management personnel actions. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.2, approval of MOU between San Sos County Office of Education and Keys Union School District After School Education and Safety Program, ACES. Mr. Brazil?
It's just our annual agreement with services with the county office for our after school program, so it's just one of those housekeeping items.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion.
You guys are always the same. I'm going to give this one to Mike.
We're twins.
You guys look so much alike. We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.3, approval of ESER 3 expenditure plan, .4470, because it always changes.
So what this is, is the most recent funding or allocation of funds to deal with COVID, we're called the ESER 3 funds. We've had ESER 1, ESER 2, and now these are the ESER 3s. I don't know if we'll have an ESER 4, but I wouldn't, would not doubt it. But anyway, along with these funds, the requirement to have a plan designating where the funds would be used had to be detailed and written and put together with stakeholders' input and the opportunity for people to share what they think are the needs. So we've done so. I did add one last item that is on here, which was to provide additional paid staff time to support students on the AB 130 Independent Study Program, because those are the students who are home and are not coming into in-person learning. And so our teachers are out of their day taking time to support those students as well. So we wanted to include that in the plan so that we could use some of those funds which are allowed under that. So I'm asking the Board today to do, or this evening, is to approve the plan. We have sent it to the county office and I think they're okay with it. However, if you approve it today, I will send it in the mail probably on my way home tonight on email to them, because it needs to go to them.
All right, any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And just to add, there will probably be changes to this plan. It's supposed to be a document that will probably have to do many changes and revisions during the next year or even longer, so.
See how he waits after he voted?
Always change.
Do we want to change our vote, anybody? Moving on to 10.4, approval of MOU between Keys Union School District and CSA Chapter 544?
Yes, we met with our Classified Employees Association and their bargaining group. We were able to come to a very quick agreement on an MOU, which dictates how we are supporting our staff, how we're providing testing, how we're providing sanitation, and how we are operating as a district. So I'd ask the Board to approve that and it will be good until the end of June.
Unless something else comes up.
Unless something else comes up. It's always open.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve that.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.5, public hearing of Census 2020 trustee board map analysis. We're going to open up that at 6:14. The Board has three options. They're on the website, they're.
What basically happens is every census year, once the census is taken, then there is the need to take a look again at the populations of any of the districts in California. And they have to be within a, if there's been shifts or changes for the regions, then we have to approve new maps and send them into the county voter or registrar's office. So there can't be a variance of more than 10%. They have to be less. So all three of the samples, both A, B, and C, are, meet the variance requirements. Whatever the Board chooses to, basically what it indicates is the areas of where each trustee has the voting, or what voters are on there. They are, the information that was provided to you has the ethnicity, the demographics. So all of the data that the census collects, they then put together in this and we, a company actually puts them together and breaks it down and presents it to us so that we have something to go by. There is the option that the Board could choose to not approve any of them. However, we need to have them approved by February 2nd. So that's why we like to bring things when it's, there's plenty of time and so, but it is entirely up to the Board to decide which it is. I will say that looking at both, at all three of them, the number of voters and the ethnic build or makeup of the community, it's a pretty even community. So I don't think anyone has any more or any less of anything. And it's really not about that. It's just, it's to assure that when you are designated as that area, that you truly are representing those who you live among and who you represent.
I'm going to start a contest on who has the most dogs in their area.
I think you win.
Yeah, I do.
And this is something Jimmy and I got dealt with years ago. I voted for it just so we didn't have to deal with the lawsuits. Jimmy voted against it, but it was 4 to 1 vote, so he still lost. It's very confusing, it's very frustrating for the voters. This is all out of our hands. It makes no sense that if I think Wes is a good board member, I should be able to vote for him. But with these districts, I don't get that option. All three of them are really, really close. So before we get ready to make a motion, we can kind of decide what we want to.
Is that every two years?
It's every 10.
10 years.
Every 10 years.
For the census. And if it stays pretty similar, we don't have to make any changes, but because of the new housing going in, it's.
It could be somewhere.
It fluctuated. And then even some, who knows what happens in 10 years? More housing going, we might have to do it again, but it's, I understand the reasonings and the concepts of the plan, it's just for such a small community, it just doesn't make sense.
And it was implemented because there were districts in California who had individuals running for offices that never really represented the constituent area, so there were minority groups and populations that felt like, we're not being served and we don't have anyone. And so the move to those areas was something that each Board kind of had to take some years back. And there was a lawsuit about the whole thing.
Millions of dollars.
But anyway, I think that the intent is to make it truly representative of those that you live and have in your communities.
And cities like Modesto and Turlock, kind of makes some sense. You know, let's divide it up so.
Rich neighborhood, poor neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, various things, but.
Which are small.
Keys is.
Yeah. And I think our Board is well-balanced. My only concern in the whole thing is if you get a board member that lives in Spratling Zone and not Key's Zone, they push all the, but I think we're a very fair, balanced community and it's working. So Jimmy, you're still wrong on your vote.
I'm still, you know, anyway. Moving right along.
All right, do we have?
Most of these maps are pretty close. My area too, never changed hardly any, but map B gives me the other side of the street for about a block and a half, which is my friends and I just.
Oh, so Jimmy.
I've lived there for 46 years. I'd like to talk to people on both sides of the street.
They're like, why can't I vote for you, Jimmy?
Yeah, I know. You're a friend of yours, but you can't vote for me.
Every time we do this, Jimmy, you have, there's always a problem.
No, it's, Mike knows. Yeah, but Mike knows, because you had to run a campaign. It's really hard when you have people on the other side of town that want to vote for you and they don't have any input.
Right.
So Jimmy wants his friend to vote for him across the street.
Poor Jimmy.
All right, so any more discussion before we close public comments? All right, do we have a motion to close at 6:19?
I'm going to make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was a real slow motion. All right, so 10.6, approval of Census 2020 trustee boundary map. So we have option B for Jimmy? Is there any other discussion on any options?
I agree with B.
Do I have, someone's going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on B.
Okay, we have a motion for B. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Wow, Jimmy, you can second that one? We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should say no.
You're right. Aye.
No.
Wes.
No. All right, we got four yeses and one no. Moving on to 10.7, approval resolution 21-22-05, continuing Board of Trustees authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB 361. Mr. Brazil?
And this is basically, the Governor has extended the timeframe for us to continue to broadcast our meetings in, and so in order to do so, the resolution needs to be approved. It does not mean that people can't come in person, it just needs, means that they have to be able to practice social distancing and mask and all of that, because we are in a school. And like tonight, we had students here, so.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.8, approval of music teacher job description.
Well, we were so excited because we really wanted to get an art and music teacher. In art, we had a job description. However, when we looked, there was no description that the district had for an actual music teacher. So tonight, what we're asking is that you approve that job description so that if we indeed find someone, which we're having a very tough time doing, that we will have a board-approved job description for he or she to follow.
It's kind of crazy, because we've had music teachers in the past. But they weren't music teachers.
They were a school district, so they moved.
Like Mr. Fair and all the ones before were actually educators.
Mr. Turner.
Picked up band. Well, he was a, he wasn't a full-time band teacher, he was a history teacher, wasn't he?
He did both.
Yeah, so he had a teacher's contract. That's the problem.
Yeah, finding a sole music credential is pretty tough this day and age, and art. I mean, they're, finding any teacher is difficult during this time, so.
All right, any other questions?
They're making a priority of them.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
I'll give that one to Jimmy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Mike, are you reading lips when someone votes?
Oh, no.
At the same time?
Wish I could read lips, I can't.
I know.
I said, what the heck?
All right, moving on, discussion items, LCAP ESER 3, I think you kind of updated us on that one?
Yep.
All right, moving on to 11.2, SMS Track Committee Meeting, which is, we've had several since the last meeting?
Well, we have and we continue to look at options. Obviously, the committee has met and we sought some input from professionals and we were basically quoted that it would be about a $1.2 million project to do a track that would be a complete and up-to-regulation track. So the committee obviously found out that that was not a feasible thing for us to do at this time. But however, we are spending an outrageous amount of money per month on irrigating that green field and it is a huge field. What we are going to try and do is do as much to either level it out or make it much more hospitable to students to play in and not gophers and squirrels to live in, because they have destroyed most of it. And kids can't even play soccer on it, because there are so many holes and things. So our hope is to continue with the committee and kind of looking at different, we've sought some help and some input from a landscape architect who came out and took a look at it. If you have been out in the middle of that field, it kind of, if you're out there and you just, it's a pretty large field and the elevation is very different, just about every 10 feet, I think there's a difference in elevation. So it would be a lot of soil to move, perhaps even a lot of soil that would need to be brought in to make it. So we'll continue to update you and see what we can do with it.
It's what, $8,000 a month for water?
$9,000.
That's about $100,000 a year, right?
Yeah.
Can we get a loan for 10 years and?
We're working on options, but I just want to say, when you drive by, that field looks perfectly flat, it looks beautiful, it looks green, but when you actually walk out there, it's.
You might lose a shoe, because it's soft in some areas.
It's very soft.
You trip over a hole or it's a mess.
A lot of that has to do with the origin next door.
Yeah.
It never was done right.
We think, we think a fresh start on the bottom level will be able to maintain the gophers and squirrels a lot better.
And I think if we could just get an area, or a couple of areas, that kids could actually go out and use for activities, and that would be, you know, a real improvement and maybe less.
I say we take the kindergarteners and get them tonka trucks and let them go out.
They move the dirt.
There's a lot that goes into planning, because we're trying to keep all the infrastructure of the plumbing and the sprinkler system, so it's.
I just don't remember it being that bad.
I don't either. We, it's, walk out there one day after school.
I think it's gotten progressively worse every year, and I think Eric and his crew have done a great job of trying, but those gophers and squirrels are just, they're no match for any, I mean, they, they're awful. We're surrounded by orchards and this is where they come.
And it was a basin, so there was a lot of water came in at times, so maybe that's what made the different bellies and stuff out there, but it's a mess.
Are there sprinklers out there?
Yes.
It's all irrigated, that's why we're paying $9,000.
I didn't know if we flood irrigate it or if it's.
No.
But I do want to say, we just had a soccer season out there and Eric and his crew, they go out there and they fill all the holes before the games and they make it as safe as they possibly can, and it's a safe soccer field, but not much around it. All right, any other questions on that? Oops. All right, moving on to 11.3, library lease between San Sos County and Keys Union?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week that they have initiated the meeting to present to us their ideas on how we can possibly address the need for the library and the district to not be completely responsible for the upkeep of the entire building. So we will update you after the meeting.
All right, that's about it. We haven't met since the last board meeting. Moving on to 12.1, superintendent reports?
Okay, first of all, I wanted to congratulate the volleyball girls and their amazing season. They took first in the tournament, but they, I saw them at the first two games they had and then at the tournament, and I think there was just amazing improvement and they were, I'm very proud of what they did and how they performed, but also how they conducted themselves in home games and away, because we had many individuals, adults and kids, who kind of defied, for whatever reason, chose to not follow rules the way they should. And I am very proud that our students absolutely did, and our parents as well. I think everyone did an amazing job. And our soccer also, I wanted to say that they improved all along the season. It was nice to even have a soccer team, because there's been years we don't have enough interest and we don't have that. So I wanted to also thank both, or all the coaches who take time and put into it so that these kids could finally play. It was so nice to finally have a game inside a gym after almost two years. So that was a pretty neat thing. Our quarantine numbers have declined, where we appreciate the efforts of our staff and what everyone does to have a clean and safe learning environment for all. We'll have two portable buildings added to this KES site and one to SMS in the future. We're looking at, obviously, contacting architects and beginning that process. The money for those three portables will be developer fees, and that's what, those fees can only go towards adding additional classrooms, they can't go for repairs of existing, so they have to be for new. So that's what we're going to be looking at and being prepared. Also, that we may need additional facilities for Universal TK if that's coming up, so there's a number of reasons, plus any growth that we may have. And all along, though, we talk about this and we're planning, and yet we're planning at the same time for declining enrollment and not having, and having fewer kids. So it's, you kind of have to be on both sides of the wheel here. We've leased some containers to store equipment and supplies that we had to remove from classrooms because of social distancing. The items stored are things like Chromebook carts and other supplies that kind of really took up an awful lot of room. The masking mandate is still in effect for basketball. We had a particular team canceled because they did not agree to the masking. We respected their stance and we have moved on and we'll be playing with those schools who are following it. We're testing all non-vaccinated employees weekly, as we're required and obligated to do. We have an appointment system and I think it is doing extremely well. Dana, I want to thank her and all the work she did to work on that. It has worked absolutely flawlessly and we have been able to get employees in and out and really keep them from missing out on work or being really inconvenient, so I'm very happy with that. We're testing, as you know, it's all of those who are non-vaccinated. I have verified with the county public health and we're allowed to hold the turkey dinner. If it's a takeout-style dinner, there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to do that. We cannot, however, have indoor dining, but we certainly can proceed with this activity, So I think that that's a good thing. We have increased paraprofessional hours to support kindergarten classes as they sit with an enrollment of 25 students per teacher. Students coming to kindergarten are obviously having a much tougher time than we would in a normal year, adjusting to a setting that they haven't experienced in their lives. So it is an absolute challenge for those teachers, and we appreciate the hard work that they are doing. And those kids are, it's, I've had to share both with Mr. Murray that we can't have expectations of students coming at kindergarten the first three months and that they are going to be perfect and they are going to sit still and they're going to do... No, these are kids who have not been in a setting for a very long time. And so the first three months and probably longer, our challenges are really to work on, how do we engage students, on procedures, on getting them to understand that we have a process. There's consequences to doing things, there's rules. And so that is a very tough, and kindergarten are just a tough group. But I also point out that, you know, the first graders didn't have first grade, or didn't have kindergarten the year before. The first graders went on to second without really having first grade either. So this is impacting everyone, not just one particular grade level. We're still looking for an art teacher. The pool for candidates is very tough. And also the music teacher as well, and also a seventh-grade teacher so that we could have Ms. Souza begin her duties as a teacher on special assignment, supporting students in compliance issues and working with plan implementation. The ESER III plan, we've approved it tonight, so we've moved on that. We're paying teachers one hour extra pay per week for those students who are indeed in independent study, as I shared with all of you. And I'll bring for the November board meeting a resolution that the board will be working on to support or to voice our stand on parental choice and vaccination. So we will bring that to the November meeting. We have a staff development meeting coming up, or a day, not a meeting, but it's November 1st. So students will not, they will be able to trick or treat and be out late on a Sunday night, because Monday will be a non-school day, so that'll work out for them. And the staff will be training. The, I'm working with an education foundation that is looking for a possible site to implement a STEM classroom or a STEM program. And so there is absolutely no cost to the district. However, we're going to continue to engage and see where that leads us to. So I wanted to share that. And it's, it's said, I want to share that I've also heard that on November 1st, we may very well hear some information from the state regarding masking. I'm, I'm just sharing, I don't know what the day or if that will happen. We have yet another plan to work on. This time, it's an educator effectiveness funding plan that we've received $212,000 that we have to, in the period of five years, expend within 10 areas. And they want the plan to be brought to the board for a public hearing in November and approval at the December. So, and the template literally came out today. And I, yeah, so there we are. We already talked about us having to update the LCAP at mid-year, probably in February. Pumpkin run is coming up, and lunch here on the 29th, I want to invite the board to be part of that. And barbecuing, Mr. Murray, what are we barbecuing? Is it hot dogs or hamburgers? Hamburgers, okay.
Jimmy was right.
I had to ask. The vision and mission posters are all out over the district and being shared. And the last thing I want to mention is our teachers and entire staff continue to work hard to deal with the class disruptions from a year of non-classroom instruction. It is less than an ideal environment. But our teachers are providing the best possible situations for learning and certainly encouraging that we get into routines and follow those. So I want to thank you for all of them. I know that we all have full plates, but we have to do what we have to do to support kids. And that's all I have.
All right, for chapter book. Any questions? All right, moving on to board member comments, Ms. Evans?
Well, the only thing I have to say is I appreciate everybody's help on the track committee. I know it's extra work, especially for Stephanie and Eric, but just trying to get a nice place for the kids to play sports, exercise, have fun, get the kids out there on the field. Hopefully, we can afford to do that. But I appreciate all the extra work.
All right, Mr. Green?
Stephanie.
She's your favorite.
Well, I missed the, I missed the last month's meeting, and I noticed that I have the unaudited actuals here. I imagine you stuck around to read this to me, right? Oh, I figured that, I thought, well, Stephanie's staying around, and this is on my desk. This must have something to do with it.
We voted on it, there's no...
Yeah, right, I figured that. How important I feel. Thank you. I only had a question, and that was just, did our reserve change, anything like that? It did, okay.
Greatly, greatly.
Well, I'm gonna sleep well tonight, then. Other than that, I just wanted to publicly apologize for missing last week's meeting. I do well at planning my time within reason, and I was a little too far away, and I didn't anticipate a drive from outwater to here being an hour and 12 minutes, I think it took.
All that cement work they're doing in the middle?
I just, I had no clue. I went through the backway, and I got on the freeway, and I was like, oh, no. So I apologize, I publicly apologize for that. That rarely will happen in my life.
I understand.
So I apologize.
It's okay, we're all still mad.
Right, I understand. And I'm doing my best to apologize. Other than that, I just, you know, I'm glad to be back, everybody, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bernau?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the staff for their hard work during this time of uncertainty. Other than that, I'm sure I'll have a lot to say next month.
All right, thank you. Ms. Green?
I had a fantastic time watching those girls play volleyball. And that last game was very exciting. And I'm looking forward to the basketball season on Monday.
All right, I have several. Super happy that sports is back. Kind of, like, Ellie and I, we always say that this, this isn't what we signed up to do during COVID. You know, like, I'm always on campus, I'm always on the sports trips, I'm always on the field trip. So it was kind of something back to normal, hanging out with kids and just being cool with them. I really appreciate all the commitment Jeff made out to all the games. Jimmy went to outside games where it was hot, because he had a big hat, but me and Jeff went inside where it was air-conditioned.
Well, for the most part.
Soccer took second place, I was able to catch a couple of the tournament games, half of the games while I was running back and forth in between. That was really great to watch. Mr. Dudley invited me to egg toss, and I've always done the egg toss pre-COVID, where the, his little electives class, they make an egg dome or egg parachute or whatever, and it has to survive a throw off the roof. And it's usually, everybody has a parachute, they all look identical. This year was amazing. They put them in popcorn, they put them in water, they, they put them wrapped in towels. They, the one thing that they might have got through this whole COVID and online learning is they really researched this, and they pulled out all these weird things to do that you would never think about putting egg in popcorn, and it was probably the best one out of the group. And all it was, was a bag of popcorn dropped. Nothing to, it was amazing. Mr. Dudley was pretty surprised, too, because usually everybody makes a parachute with a trash bag, and you throw it off. That was really good to be back, kind of on the roof of campus, but being with the kids and watching them laugh while the eggs come down. And then, I think that's it. I have a whole bunch of stuff, but it's, we miss normal life, you know? We want to be back on campus. There'd be a point where we can come back on campus, but it's not yet. And I know the teachers miss us, and we miss the kids and all that, so we're moving as best as we can. Next board meeting will be November 18th, closed session at 5:30, regular session will be at 6:00. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Jeez.
Mike got it.
We'll give that one to Mike. Do we have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.